To be here, Councilman Lane did give us notice that he would not be able to be here.
Right. I'm willing to wait a couple of minutes for Mayor Protem if that's all right.
On me.
We are recording. We are recording. We are live on sixteen, and I think this is Mayor Protem.
Right.
Yeah, I take that, Sam.
Mayor Protem, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Welcome. We're going to go ahead and get started. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting. We have teleconference Zoom on Monday, July twentieth, twenty twenty, beginning at six P. M. For the purpose of considering the following agenda, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask that the clerk, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Protem, Bell?
Present.
Councilmember District D already said he had a previous engagement. He was not here tonight. Councilmember District C? I know. I know he's here. He's on his phone, though.
This is Mitch Titch. I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember District D?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, of course, is here.
Thank you, guys. It's good to see and hear everyone. Under new business, item three A, discussion possible action relating to city manager presenting the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one budget of the City of Lamarck. Do you have any remarks before we accept that, Mr. Jackson?
No, just to say, all of you received your book, and of course, my blue screen is blacking it out, but you received your book this afternoon. And I do want to point out a couple of things. So we've had a lot of conversations over the course of, I would say, probably the last month I have with each one of you. I know each of you has some different ideas for different priorities for this year, and some things that you want to see done this year. And so this this budget cycle starting out a little bit different than how we started out last year. We had the departments give us their proposals, and we took those original proposals, did the best we could with the known revenues that we had, which was not much additional, once we took care of increases and insurances and everything else that were annual increases that we had to deal with. But keeping into it, keeping in mind, of course, COVID nineteen and how, you know, how we had to be cognizant of our sales tax numbers between that and the I forty-five expansion. And we put together a base budget that does the best we can with what we have. Now, of course, you guys get to to make other proposals if you want to, and we'll look at those things and try to figure out how it works around during that. But a lot of you, a lot of you, all of you had talked to me about certain items that you individually had had said that you wanted to see in the budget, and so you probably will not see a lot of those things in there. Some of them, if they were smaller in nature, we got them in. If they weren't, they're probably, if they were bigger or bigger money items, they probably aren't. It's on the budget workshops. We'll get through the rest of that stuff and see if we can get to the rest of those, the rest of those issues. So now you've got it. We've got the schedule there for the budget workshops, and you guys can start reviewing it, and we'll work through it when we get into budget workshops. That's all I have there.
Thank you. I'm going to entertain a motion then, and we'll follow the same protocol of our previous Zoom meetings by stating your name and your vote, since not all of us are here on the screen. And the motion will be to accept the presentation of the twenty twenty-one budget of the City of Lamarck to be approved later in the process of an emotion.
Come on, move. Mayor, Mayor Protem, come on.
Second.
There's motion, and it sounds like we had a tie. We'll let Mitch Titch have that second, and we'll we'll go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk, since it's a short agenda.
Okay. Councilmember District D?
Hi.
Mayor?
Hi.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, did you call everybody?
Bell's gone. I mean, not Bell. Lane is not here, so I didn't even include him in that roll call.
Oh, so you took the?
Put him down for a absent. He's absent.
Right. So you took the motion and the second as an I?
Yes.
All right. I'll go along with that. Dara, you on here? You cool with that? Guess not. Sounds like we're all in agreement. Are there any no's? Well, then that would settle that. Motion passes. Item B, discussion possible action relating to approve agreements with Texas Department of Transportation, Texas dot, to design the relocation of the City of Lamarck water sewer utilities that are in conflict with the IH forty-five widening project from north of five nine FM five nineteen to north of the Texas City Y. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Councilmember McAuliffe, I second.
Thank you so much. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. If you'll call the roll, please.
Okay, Councilmember District A?
Hi.
Mayor Protem? Hi. Do you want me to go ahead and go?
Let's just go through the whole deal.
Okay. Councilmember District B is absent. Councilmember District C, Mitch Titch?
Hi.
Councilmember District D, McAuliffe?
Hi.
And the mayor is an I, so the motion carries. Item C, discussion possible action relating to the budget calendar, Mr. Jackson.
I'll ask the finance director to talk to you about this with Susie.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Pardon me?
I said hello.
Hello, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. The budget, we pretty much follow the same routine that we've been using for past years. No changes made other than just the state, the dates itself. So normally, we arrange for three full days of budget workshops for different discussions. I didn't set the time for those three days, so I guess that's up to City Council and city manager. It's it's pretty much the same as previous years. If you we apologize that normally we take this council March with COVID nineteen and everything going on. My apology, I overlooked it and didn't go through council, so better than never, but pretty much it's similar to past years. How we go through it unless council wants to change that, that's entirely up to council. Whatever we propose is just merely a draft. It's not something official until councils, they, you know, certain way.
And the proposal we have right now is for those council workshops to be via Zoom on July twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and thirtieth?
Yes, sir.
And then I think last year, we started each day. I don't remember. Mayor Protem was at ten or ten thirty, because you were the one that that set the time that we started. You remember what time it was?
Uh, I don't, but uh, ten thirty is good for me.
Ten thirty? Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. And I guess it can just go on until whenever we we want to just stop that particular day. I think that's how we normally did it in past years.
We'll get a schedule laid out for all each of the three days, and if we get done early one day and you guys want to go ahead and continue, then we can go ahead and continue. And if not, then we'll stop until the next day and start up again the next day. I don't think we'll have as many presentations this year as we had last year, because we had to talk about Gulf Coast and the and the wastewater treatment plan, and we had some other things, a bunch of things that we took care of last year that were big items that we have presentations on. So probably cut the presentations back a little bit. So and we'll have it where it pulls up on the screen as we're going through it, so we can go through it on the screen and view it for everybody to keep up with exactly where we're at while we're going through. You're muted, Mayor.
Oh. It is council's budget, so it is council's workshop, so whatever that works best for majority of council will.
At ten thirty A. M. Sounds good to me, and those dates work for me.
Great.
I do think we should have standing breaks, though, because it's really hard to sit and stare at your screen for hours and hours and hours.
We'll get we'll get those put in. Kyle, unmute the mayor, please.
Sorry, my bad. Thanks, everyone. Yeah, we'll take plenty of breaks, and I think since we're not going to be meeting together, we'll just have the city, DoorDash, our waiter, us, our meals and snacks, and do it that way. So without further ado, I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget calendar subject to change as presented.
Mayor Protem, come on, Mayor.
Thank you.
Your second.
Councilwoman McAuliffe, I second.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the votes. Is there anyone opposed? Show the motion passes. Item four is executive session. We'll be retreating into executive session under section five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matters. I'm going to give everybody just a few seconds or a couple of minutes to get on that other link. Madam Clerk, will you please call the time?
I have seven twelve.
We will adjourn the meeting at seven twelve, go into executive session.
I am so sorry, six twelve.
Six twelve. Thank you. Seven twelve in New York City. So we will close the regular meeting and enter into executive session. If anyone has a problem with the link, please contact Kyle, and then we will come back to this Zoom meeting for the vote on executive session after the executive session. So we'll close the regular meeting now and move on to executive session.
Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you might be still on there.
Yeah, I'm supposed to play a video for everybody on YouTube that's watching.
Okay. I'm gonna let you go ahead and play that video, but how am I going to know when they come back?
When they when they start coming back into the room on the participant list, I'll see them and I'll stop the video.
Okay, all right.
Oh, I can't wait to watch the video.
Let me see. Mayor wants back in.
Whatever. Whatever, Susie. You're weird.
Make sure there's music.
Let me see. Mayor, I think you clicked on the wrong, the wrong link. You're back in the regular meeting.
Now, that's unfortunate. Let me do that again.
There we go.
Okay.
Wow.
COVID nineteen is spreading across Galveston County, and we can all play a part in slowing it down.
It means practicing social distancing, washing our hands, and not going out in public when we're sick, and wearing a mask.
It's up to each of us to take responsibility, keep our community and each other safe. Let's do our part, Galveston County.
This is Lamarck's Kids Fish.
Two hundred kids, one hundred volunteers, parents, grandparents, and friends.
Coming together, building community for the love of fishing.
We brought our kids out here so that three of them could learn how to fish, and the other two love fishing, so we hope to catch the biggest or the smallest. Either one would be great, and they're all having a great time.
Through this event, Lamarck is introducing kids to the outdoors and a healthy new hobby.
Our city council, local businesses, and community partners are all investing in Lamarck's youth.
So it's really, really important that the kids have the opportunity to come out here, to learn how to fish, learn different things about the poles and the little baits and things like that. It's a good opportunity for them to just have fun, to relax, to play, and to just learn about the community and the environment that they're in, and to have the opportunity to do a lot of this stuff on their own and teach themselves and their sibling.
Fishing is the cornerstone of Gulf Coast living with access to bays, boughs, and lakes.
With this gear, you can fish anywhere, especially here, Holland Bay Park, a hometown hangout.
Got it. Keep the line tight.
This is more than just wetting a line.
It's building a community.
We want to introduce our kids to Lamarck city staff, police, fire, public works, all of us.
When our kids feel secure, Lamarck thrives.
This is just the beginning. Fishing is the foundation that's growing Lamarck's future. This is Lamarck.
My daughter, you're proud of your mom, aren't you, honey?
It's easier to plan for a hurricane than to actually have to respond.
Welcome to the City of Lamarck Hurricane Huddle.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We're the City of Lamarck Public Safety Team. We are emergency management, fire, police, and public works.
When there's an emergency, we've got your back.
We want to make sure you know who we are and what we do.
Meet us before you need us.
Pretty cool, huh?
Serving during times of emergency is what we do.
Protecting and preparing our community. We love Lamarck.
We've come a long way, and we're headed in the right direction.
Remembering the past while working hard, preparing for the future.
Staying positive.
And moving forward.
Coming together, making Lamarck ready for tomorrow.
We train to make our city the best that it can be.
Protecting you and your loved ones.
This is Lamarck.
Our city. We are caring for our community.
Turning friendships to family, even through times of turmoil.
Public safety, public servants, ready to weather the storm.
We are prepared, are you? Lamarck, stay weather aware. We're prepared, are you?
Hurricane season is in full swing. Please make a plan for your family and your pets. For additional preparedness resources, visit storm dot city of Lamarck dot org. For emergencies, dial nine one one. We are Lamarck. This is Lamarck, the gateway to the Gulf.
The hub of the mainland.
Life is good.
Life is good in Lamarck.
Lamarck is coastal living.
Whether you are boating.
Taking your family to the park.
Or waking up to the sunrise over Galveston Bay.
Easy breezy coastal living happens here.
This is home. This is my home.
Business thrives here.
Not everybody can do what we do.
Made in Texas, made in Lamarck, Texas.
Global shipping by air, road, rail, and port.
Lamarck means business.
Authentic food.
Dedication to education.
The arts.
Access to world-class medical.
Investing now.
Making this community our community.
Buttermilk Junction to the Highlands, now the City of Lamarck.
Traditions are born here.
State champs, back to back to back.
Education runs deep with six school systems.
We are one community.
I love Lamarck.
The world record crawfish fish.
Music festival, holiday lights, trail rides.
Fishing tournaments.
We are Lamarck.
We are Lamarck.
Giving back to the community that built us.
Kindness matters. Lamarck cares.
From Sunday worship to Friday night lights, the future is bright.
Continued growth and vibrant rebirth.
From our backyards to our storefronts.
This city is beautiful.
Opportunities are limitless.
From our solid foundation.
By our own creativity.
Anything is possible.
I am Lamarck.
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 We are Lamarck.
I am Lamarck.
We are Lamarck.
I am Lamarck.
I am Lamarck.
I am Lamarck.
I am Lamarck.
And so together, we are Lamarck. This is Lamarck.
Obviously, Mr. Meter's safe.
Ten four, Tom, phone. Oh, my way. Out of Meetsam, ten thirty-five, Mary.
Go back, show them with the X seven, all hills.
X seven, out of all their options. It's for four one one six C W David Williams.
Four forty, second level, go ahead and test for steel. Center, one eight two, two nine four nine, off the P S. I shall see you at the square at the next one. Do I deal with the place?
Negative.
Seven Edward Victor, take two, five, four.
Maybe seven Edward Victor, eight eight five one. Point negative twenty-nine, current two thousand Honda, out of darky, not long, one four. Rose France, come on.
Hey, Mary, now. Don't film.
Hello, I'm Chief Kirk Jackson. It is the mission of the Lamarck Police Department to serve and protect the citizens of our community. We understand it can be stressful to get pulled over, but it is our goal to make sure that the officers and the citizens make it home safe each evening. For more information on traffic stops or to schedule a traffic stop demonstration by one of our officers, you can reach out to us on our Facebook page or call four zero nine nine three eight nine two six nine. Together, we are community strong and Lamarck proud. Man, the police.
Why? We haven't done anything wrong.
I can't believe this. I was doing everything by the book, and I know I wasn't speeding.
Remember what Dad taught us? We have to stay calm, no sudden movements, keep our hands visible, and be respectful. Just answer all of his questions. He's doing his job.
How can my sister be so calm and I'm freaking out? We know how this could possibly end: arrest, assault, or even we've all seen the news, another senseless. Okay, stop it. I'm scaring myself.
Assess the situation. Remember the safety surroundings training. A driver and one passenger. I don't see anyone in the backseat. Driver's hands are visible. Stay alert at all times, be aware, and keep an eye on the driver and passenger. Watch their nonverbal cues and listen for anything that doesn't sound right.
I'm not going to prejudge this police officer, and I hope he hasn't prejudged me.
I'm not going to prejudge this driver, and I hope he hasn't prejudged me.
He's here to do his job.
I'm here to do my job. Good afternoon. My name is Officer Anders with the Lamarck Police Department. The reason why you're being stopped is you have a defective brake light on the passenger side of your vehicle. Also, you made an illegal right turn at the traffic light. May I have your driver's license and insurance, please?
Just remember what Dad taught you. Stay calm. My driver's license is in my wallet, which is in the console. Do you mind if I grab it?
Of course, thank you. Okay, just remain in the vehicle. I'll be back shortly. Okay, thank you, Raymond. You'll be issued a citation for the defective brake light. It's important that you get that light fixed as soon as possible, and then you'll receive a warning for the improper turn at this traffic light. All I need for you to do is sign in this box with your finger. This is the citation. If you have any questions, instructions are on the back of the citation.
Yes, sir.
That was stressful. So thankful that it's over. I wonder if Mom knows that she has a broken taillight. I'm glad you didn't argue that ticket. Remember what Dad said? The side of the road is never the place to disagree. The side of the road is never the place to disagree. We'll get it fixed and then call Lamarck Municipal Court.
I guess hope you were right. Being calm and being respectful is important. That wasn't a big deal.
In Lamarck, Texas, development is coming from all directions, and Lamarck Economic Development Corporation is ready to roll out the red carpet for your grocery store, entertainment, restaurant, and retail projects. The wave is building, and we mean business. We've got the I-45 frontage, and we want you here. Lamarck is the last mainland city before you reach Galveston Island, and we're safely tucked behind a hurricane protection levee. Just four miles north of Galveston and 15 miles south of Bay Area Houston, Lamarck is the southern anchor to the economically strong Houston-Galveston region with access to four deepwater ports, two Class 1 rail lines, three airports, and the expanding I-45 corridor. There are $1 billion in projected regional road infrastructure improvements over the next few years, along with the City of Lamarck's dedication to local infrastructure investment. Now is the time for commercial development in Lamarck. Life is good here. Citizens enjoy easy, breezy coastal living. It's a sport fisherman's paradise with a relaxed atmosphere, new schools, a nearby community college, and access to world-class travel and entertainment options. More than 7 million visitors pass through Lamarck to visit Galveston Island each year, and with the expanding free ship terminal, that number will continue to grow. Tap into the NASA-KIMA Galveston Tourism Market. Our power center anchored by Walmart and Sam's has pad sites available now, as well as parcels from a few acres up to 400. With a local population growth rate of 15.4%, 8,000 rooftops under construction, and aggressive incentives for good deals, it just makes sense. The tourism market, along with the expanding petrochemical industry in neighboring Texas City, provides a constant flow of new people, new investment, and new ideas to our city. Call us at 409-938-9258 for a tour or visit lmedc.com to see the RTA data.
This is Gardi with KHEA Radio. I'm at Schlitzberger and Daughters Monument Company right here in Lamarck, Texas. They offer headstones, monuments, and onsite sandblasting. This is Shine on Lamarck.
I'm Kimberly Schlitzberger Day with Schlitzberger and Daughters Monument Company, and this is Shine on Lamarck. We make memorials for cemeteries. We also do commercial sandblasting. We do custom memorials. Pretty much anything that has to do with granite.
We've done war memorials. We do memorials for like ballparks and service memorials for fallen warriors. A little bit of everything, commercial sandblasting.
You know, we all have a love for the business, and we love what we do. So, and most of us were raised around it, so it's just comes naturally for us.
It gets our kids to be so much a part of the community that they live in and that they work in. They... We get to share that with them. They get to know people that own businesses. They get to meet the local people in the community. They get to participate. We do some things with local churches and stuff like that. So I got to do that stuff growing up. My dad was always big into community activities, and now our kids get to do that, too. And they get... I think it builds roots.
It's almost a legacy thing. A lot of people buy from their grandparents came in and bought the headstone. And then when Grandma passes away, the mother comes in and she plans her headstone. So it just goes down from generation to generation. And then we have, you know, just namesake. Schlitzberger's hard to forget.
We've been here a long time, and we have a big footprint here. And I love the idea that we get to continue that another generation and hopefully another generation.
It's nice. We really love the location that we're at. We get a lot of business here, and I think it's definitely a place that we need to grow, especially with the freeway expanding like it is. There's a lot of opportunity for businesses.
This is Gardi with KHEA Radio. I'm at Mobile Computer Geeks off of Highway 3 right here in Lamarck, Texas. Networking, security cameras, computer repair, they got you covered. This is Shine on Lamarck.
This is Brian Courtney, Mobile Computer Geeks, and this is Shine on Lamarck. Anything to do with computer, we'll do repairs. We do builds. We do networking. We do security cameras. We are mobile. You can either bring it into the shop or we'll go out to you. I started in 2005 out of my house, and the spot became available in 2008. We've moved here and been here ever since. Yeah, I grew up in Lamarck, graduated from Lamarck. So, and the spot opened up in Lamarck, so I like doing business here. For us, I mean, I've always been customer service oriented, so we try to do what we say, do it when we say we're gonna do it, and just try to make everybody happy. Do a lot of computer work. We still do a lot for businesses, networking, stuff like that. It's just maybe the residential has dwindled down a little bit because people are using iPads or phones. I mean, we have several clients, accountants, and builders in Houston that we do steady business with. So, I mean, we're everywhere from the west end of Galveston through Galveston, Texas City, Lamarck, Hitchcock, Dickinson, Lake City. You know, I'm mobile, so I can go anywhere. We do get quite a business from Lamarck, but we get, you know, our building is a big advertisement, so we get a lot of business from people going to work down Highway 3. So it's easy to get around, and the people are friendly.
This is Gardi with KHEA Radio. I'm at Razor Sharp Barber Shop located in downtown Lamarck. They offer a range of services. Adult cuts, shaves, children's cuts. They get your eyebrows looking right. This is Shine on Lamarck.
This is Larry Washington here at Razor Sharp Barber Shop downtown Lamarck. This is Shine on Lamarck. Well, we offer a lot of services. We offer razor shaves, ball face, taper face.
Just looks like a few people aren't back on. Is Kyle... Kyle, are you there?
Kyle is on. Mayor has not made it back, and...
He's on, it looks like. Mitch Hitts is on.
Correct. Mayor's not back, and Councilwoman McCullough just texted me. She had trouble with her computer getting into the executive session. We finally got her in. Now she can't get back into this one. So I suppose all we have to do is adjourn, so we're probably okay. She can't make it back in. She said she's gonna keep trying, but she doesn't think she's gonna be able to.
Um, let's see. But there's a quorum?
There still will be. We'll have three.
Bell, and once Mayor gets back on, yeah.
Yeah, once Mayor gets back on, we'll be fine.
Looks like he's back.
Yeah, he's back.
Wow. I promise you, I'm not as stupid as I look, but that was a slow-moving deal there, so... Madam Clerk, will you call the time, please?
My goodness, that's too funny. Um, hold on.
Thank you. We're going... We've... Thank you. We've come out of executive session. We're resuming the regular meeting at the appropriately called time, and there'll be no action taken from the executive session except for us to say that we were discussing the city attorney position, but there'll be no action taken this evening. That will be done during budget. So without further ado, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment of the regular meeting.
Mayor, please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Thank you, guys. Is there anybody opposed to adjourned? Hearing none, we shall be adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. Good seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.